I'm calling the meeting to order. Everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will start with public to be heard.
No one.
No one, all right. We're gonna open with our public hearing for our safety plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Smith's gonna touch on a couple of points.
Yeah, so the safety plan is in the board agenda, just three main points to show the board and the public. We updated some pieces in there. We have removed some information and have added the I love you guys protocol, which is a protocol that we've been trained on through the local police department. So we've updated that response protocol, which has been outdated and added the, it's called I love you guys. I've said, has been trained on that, it's the second year there, so that's been updated. We did add the extreme heat law and protocol for that, per the state, that's on page twenty-three of the document. And then lastly, cosmetically, we updated the table of contents. The district plan is available for public comment for the next thirty days. If a member of the public had any comments, they can send an email to us, it's on the website, it's on the plan itself. But Chad, Melissa, our safety director, and the comments can be emailed to him. The board is gonna have to adopt the plan about thirty days from now and to post it on the website and then approved by the state by October first. Those are the three main changes.
All right. Any questions from the board? Nothing?
No.
All right, perfect. We'll need a motion to close the public hearing on this?
Solved.
Motion by Jen?
Second.
Second by L. Sam. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, next up, we're gonna switch around the agenda just briefly. We're gonna skip over the C for presentations and skip down to our reports to Superintendent Mr. Smith. But before we do, just wanna take a second and welcome and introduce Eli Fancher, who will be our student aficionado this year. So welcome, you got off the hook this month, so you will not have to give us a report, but we look forward to your reports on a monthly basis. All right, do you have anything you wanna say, Eli? All right, save it for next month? Perfect. All right, Mr. Smith, superintendent's report.
Thank you, I just want to recognize our student athletes, sure that you're six thirties or have a chance to recognize our state champions at about six thirty. I wanna walk the board through some highlights, I'm trained now, doing an update this year, I'm gonna show some slides and pictures to kinda give you a better representation. I'm gonna talk at length in a minute about the cell phone policy, the internet-enabled device ban, it's a veteran known, but I have some highlights to share as well up here on the board. So I begin first all by recognizing our graduates, both at the high school, middle school, and our K schools, our kindergarten schools, and John Kennedy. We have our graduation there at the top center at Bandana, held on a beautiful, rain-free Friday night. We have one of our moving up ceremonies to the right with Brielle. We have some students here at John Kennedy who are moving up to fourth graders, up to fifth grade rather, and then some seventh graders moving up as our seventh- and the awards ceremony. So that's why I wanna recognize our staff and students for a successful end to the year, a great event to celebrate. All those great adventures, all those adventures are great to celebrate. So I wanna jump right into the New York State internet-enabled ban, cell phone ban. So we surveyed our staff and our students, our staff and our families. I'm kinda walking through the highlights of that survey, and then of course, we have a recommendation to approve the policy. So we, staff and families were surveyed at the high school and at the middle school. We received two hundred and nine responses. There is a recommendation that we approve the policy tonight, this will be the second reading. We're recommending that we purchase cell phone stores, items and devices for our students in grades seven through twelve, and then some reimbursement is available through New York State. You can see there on the bottom right that most of our responses came from the high school and the middle school. You can see that the high school had about four to five percent response and the high school and the middle school had about the same. So we have two, we had two hundred and eight responses, I'm gonna show you the staff responses as well. And then I have a summary of all, of all the comments. So we asked our parents, families, what you see as the biggest impact of student cell phone use during the school day? The top three were a disruption to learning, exposure to inappropriate content and material, and reduced social interaction. Then there's a variety of other choices, comments there as well, but those were the top three that we offered. And you can see that almost two-thirds said it made a disruption to learning, exposure to inappropriate content and material, and reduced social interaction. We just kinda engaged where our parents are at with that. Here's a summary of the comments and questions. So the first question we asked, are there any other observations or thoughts you'd like to share about the student use of personal devices during the school day? To that, we had a hundred and thirty-three responses. Here's a summary with respect for a support for a ban or for a restriction. Many of our respondents, support banning or limiting the self-use during instructional time, distractions and reduced focus were the most common concerns. Time was spent, our parents observed how much time is wasted managing cell phone use, mental health concerns. Several of our parents in door suits had binged their lockers to hold phones during the day. And then there was still kinda much, you know, concern around for limited usage designated times to allow cell phones. The ban does not allow for any cell phone use at all during the school day. Those are some of the positive comments. Then we had some mixed views, some were in favor of having limited access, again, the law does not allow for that. The law does allow for the second bullet, exceptions for medical needs, that is outlined in the policy. Students with IEPs looking at consequence, the graduated consequence. We obviously wanna see consistent enforcement among teachers and schools. And then we've also had conversations about using less technology in general, not just cell phones, Chromebooks and that type of thing. What they can see is equally distracting. Oppositions were banned, as you might expect, concerned about children being able to talk, talk to their parents when they're at home or when they're not at school or when they're not at home. Real-world preparation, this is a knee-jerk reaction, and a few have said outright that they will not comply. But those were the opposition to the ban. Then we asked for any thoughts or any questions, we got a hundred and fifty responses for that. Themes were something around safety and emergency concerns. Again, in the policy, we do outline how parents can contact schools in the event of emergency. So there is obviously the tracking, tracking, peace of mind concerns. This, this also does include not just cell phones, but watches, that type of thing, but obviously the big kind of central on cell phones. So what are some of the safety and emergency concerns that we heard, we heard from our parents? Some themes around how we're going to share information, valid point, last-minute schedule changes with the practices, we need to, you know, stay on top of that. Make sure you update your timely. And then, again, parents have suggested allowing phones at lunch or during hallway time. Again, that's not allowable per the law. Medical needs, this per IEPs and CSE meetings, there may be some exceptions made with doctors' notes. And we do, some students, of course, that rely on parents to contact them during the day. We've got another mental health. So support for ban in the classrooms, there's general, generally more support for instructional focus. Many parents agree that phones should not be, again, this is a summary of the comments. They wanna make sure that we're being consistent, make sure that we have efficient ways that we can enforce it and they're being, you know, consistent. And again, possibly keeping the device in the lockers, but they oppose bans during the school day themselves. So I'm gonna show you what our, what our proposal is for our grades with that. Questions, here are some of the questions, groups and themes. We are preparing a FAQ document to be posted on our website, they will answer many of these questions. Again, you can see some themes there, what exactly is a cell phone policy, who does it apply to? How will parents be contacted during the day? What if there are emergencies, issues with medical needs? These will be posted this week and in terms of FAQ on our website. More questions there around enforcement and fairness, will they be stored, again, this will all be addressed? Our smartwatches and where it was allowed, no? And their comments about metal detectors, does it limit parent-child contact? So those are some general, or some outlier comments we got as well. Then let me start by our faculty and staff, this was broken down by the high school. Interestingly, we said we gave the staff a chance to respond. Do you think students should be able to store their phones in their lockers, will that be successful or not? Over half said no, knowing our students, that the goal of the cell phone policy is not to have access to them. During passing time, they're going to be tempted to check the locker, so overwhelming our staff, or not with a lot of, over half, seventy, seventy-eight percent. And that's, that's pretty close, fifty-one said yes, but seventy-eight percent of our staff, so they will not be successful. At the middle school, they had about sixty-six percent, they're not really students will be successful, at least in grades seven through eight. Only a small number said that they would be successful with the cell phone policy, with having them locked up. Here are some themes from our teachers and staff. Increased disruptions and lost instructional time concerns, and our teachers know our students. Are they going to be asked to leave class to access lockers? Worried about not having full compliance with their circumvent the rules. And again, you know, there could be issue with our students wanting to check the cell phones on a regular basis. So all that will be, will be handled. Here are some other ideas, again, our staff theme, lockers are an incomplete option. Student making, but many won't, you know, they need to have firm boundaries. Looking at one of the recommendations, which we're going to talk about in a minute, have a central, have a central phone spot where phones can be gathered each morning. Consequences, and then make sure that we have enforcement across the board to make sure the policy can be updated and are enforced and followed. So, we have been given just like ten thousand dollars from the state to purchase supplies. The recommendation, this is not in the policy, the board just has to vote on the policy, but how we wanna implement the policy is for grades seven through twelve, students will put their cell phones in a pouch there, we're gonna have them designed with our logo on it. Each student's phone is going to be put in a pouch. It'll be then put in a file folder to the right and then locked in a file, in like a file folder cabinet and stored in a locked room. This will be grades, for grades seven through twelve. Again, most of our teachers in support of this concept. For grades, the rest of the grades is simply going to be off and away in the back path. We have found that most of our elementary kids, not all of them, but most of them are more compliant than our older students. So there will be central spots for the phones to be gathered each morning. We're in the process of working out those details right now, but we have authorized the purchase of these storage containers. We are gonna track our expenses and Molly's been working on this with me as well, has Andy anything you wanna add to that? The two of you been involved in the conversations.
I just think that all the principals are thoughtfully thinking about all of the logistics in terms of making it a reality. You know, having every kid put a phone in a pouch on the way into school is something you have to think through, how is that system gonna work and be efficient so that it doesn't take away time? And then if something happens, you know, how can you get to it quickly? So, it's a little different in each school, and they're working on that.
So I wanna pause, I have some other things to share, I wanna pause the meeting and other, to see if any questions in the board or any, anything that's not clear.
Who's chat gonna be to collect all these at the beginning of the day?
We're in the process of looking at our current staff to do that.
And okay, so I'm putting my phone in a pouch and the pouch is going in a folder with my name on it. Who's to say I don't take John's on the way out or Chaz's on the way out?
Those, well, the names are gonna be on the folders, right, so that's, that's one.
Right, but I know he's got a brand-new phone and I have my little flip phone, what am I doing? Like how, who's stopping that? You're then putting something else.
The staff members are going to.
The staff members will be not, yeah.
So they essentially will have to open each pouch and say, okay, yeah, there's Jen's picture, here's her phone?
No, you're saying the names of the students are gonna be on those pouches.
The names of the stu, the names of the students will be on the folder, not the pouches. So the names, the phones dropped into a pouch, placed in the folder with the student's name on it, all that.
I'm just looking at human error, so it gets put in whoever's right behind mine. I'm gonna have to check my pouch before I leave, obviously. So, the phones get mixed up, now what? Cause I have a brand-new, I have a old crappy flip phone and the one I've been handed is a brand-new one. Am I really gonna tell you or am I gonna walk away with a brand-new phone?
I would hope so, don't you tell us what it is?
I would hope so too, I'm just going more to pace now that my kid has a new phone and comes home with one that's not his. Or doesn't have a new phone and comes home with one, a brand-new phone that's not his.
But if it's locked, they won't be able to use it.
I don't know.
That's, yeah, yeah.
Not, not saying anything, but I know my son right now, even though he knows my password. If I lock my phone out, he can still get into it and everything else. Give me back to normal. I'm not that smart with electronics, but they are.
Yeah, so that's something I have to watch for, Jen, that's a pretty simple question.
I thought it was gonna be like separate, like separate lockers for each student.
Well, essentially are.
It's, it's not.
It's gonna be locked, but each folder, each pouch will be, each phone will be in a pouch in a folder.
No, but I thought it was gonna be a separate locker, like a, like almost like a shoe, or like a little locker that individually.
We looked into that, the problem with that, we have students at the high school coming in from two different entrances and we're concerned about space and exit for the hallway. So we looked into maybe like building something out there, that's, that's not an option. This also gives us a port block and to move the, to move the firefold around.
So say there's an emergency during the day and the child, the student gets excused and goes to get his phone, who monitors?
We'll have an adult, Mrs. Westman, Dr. Cryer, process of looking at staff right now to assign, to have that assigned to someone. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, it'll either be locked or supervised by a staff member.
We're getting ten thousand three hundred sixty-six left for New York State, what's the cost of this for us?
So we head to the numbers, do you recall?
Yeah, it's less than that, it's, it's well below that number, we'll be within the ten thousand dollars.
How many are we looking at purchasing?
We're gonna purchase enough of the pouches, we're gonna purchase enough pouches for obviously the students in grades seven through twelve. The number of storage containers on the right, so, we're looking at the largest ones we can get. A middle school's going to be tricky because there's so many floors, but we're only, they're only doing grades seven and eight. The high school, looking at a couple of different entrances, the busters come in through this door, the walkers and people who get dropped off coming through the main door. Ms. West is, is in the process of looking at current staff right now to see who can manage, we have staff out there anyway, so just to be a matter of reassigning staff. So as far as those divided, or as far as the lockers go type thing, do we have a number on those yet, Andy? Have they given us an idea?
Um, I don't, I, we don't have the exact number from Wendy, in the twenties, in regards to the total number of those cabinets. Just for all the locations, both at the high school, middle school, and then approximately a thousand of those bags.
Who's, who's involved as far as liability for a lost damage or anything like that to phones? Is that a school or is that go down to whoever was in charge of watching them? Cause as a teacher, if I was in charge of collecting them and I'm liable at the end of the day, I wouldn't do it.
Well, as a teacher, I'd be personally liable.
Okay.
If you, if you cover them in school, a teacher would be personally liable for it. The school policy, school has some.
Okay, yeah, cause as a teacher, I would definitely not.
Personally liable for that.
So I know you said you're gonna put out a talking point, obviously we don't know what kids or how many kids have cell phones. You said we're gonna buy a thousand, what's our consequence steps?
So the policy, the law does not allow for us to suspend students from having a cell phone.
Right.
But we also have to track the number of issues we have to have. As far as if, if we see students, you know, with a cell phone, they're not gonna be penalized for having this, they're gonna be asked to put the cell phone away, follow the proper steps. If they don't follow the steps, then that becomes a disciplinary matter. So, it will, it will be treated as any other fracture, it could be insubordination. They'd be, they'd be, the consequence they will be given would not be because they had the cell phones, because they went with the cell phone away. If they're asked to put the cell phone away, the cell phone goes away, that's that. The other comment that came up on the survey too was a question about students bringing in non-internet cell phones. We are gonna have a recommendation for the board and law, we said, with our principal's support, that we're also looking at not allowing any telephones, whether it's internet-enabled or not. The policy, the law rather, talks specifically about internet-enabled devices. The goal behind that really is to not have students be on social media during the day, that's where some of our problems happen. But there is a concern about, you know, the old-fashioned flip phones, so we are gonna make a recommendation that we not allow those either. That's not required by the policy, but we also wanna get out of habit as well.
And then we're not allowed a smartwatch?
What's that, smartwatch, smartwatch is, smartwatch is not allowed here at the gym, that's per the policy.
And so I'm assuming those two would have to go in this folder thing?
Yes, yeah, you're right, yeah.
So this is required by New York State that we adopt this by August first.
Correct, and post it on our website. In order for us to receive that ten thousand dollars, we have to have the policy posted on the website. Andy, I have to acknowledge on the state-led website that we have done a policy. And we're working on FAQ right now, a letter will be going out this week to our families that explain the policy. We do plan on doing more sharing out in terms of what this policy would look like, and on a day-to-day, on a kind of day-to-day basis.
Was the price on the lockers itself, is something the file cabinet?
They're just over three hundred dollars a piece. So in total, roughly about six thousand dollars for the entire purchase, so just the cabinets?
No, other than the cabinets, lockers, if we put in lockers.
Oh, the lockers?
What's that price?
Um.
Did, did we look at that price?
We, we looked at it, it wasn't about the price, it was about.
I, I know that, but.
They're, they're, they're probably a bit more than the file, the lockable file cabinets.
I don't think these filing cabinets are gonna work.
Well, they're, they're the same concept as a locker.
It's the same, it's the same concept, but at least I know one phone is in a locker, not fifty phones in one filing cabinet to where this assigned locker, fifty is my assigned locker, I know that's my phone. Instead of Joe Smo picking up a phone, handing me the pouch, I'm pulling out my phone, putting, giving back the pouch and I'm walking right out the door.
Yeah, I mean, same, those lockers can get opened and someone else can take the phone. I guess it's tough because we don't know how many students we really have that utilize these lockers, right? Or these.
Well, almost every student has a cell phone, grades seven through twelve. Right, so we have.
Six hundred kids in each school.
Six hundred kids.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily mean each kid's going to bring their cell phone to school each day. They may say, I'm not gonna worry about it, I'm worried about having my phone lost, I'm just gonna leave it in my car.
Chad, I see your, we see your point, but we really wrestle back and forth with the concept of actual locker versus this. This gives us an opportunity to move the, the lockers are more fixed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was kind of concerned with, you know, storage space on the hallways, the way, this way they can be locked, they actually can be locked up twice. Put the cabinet locked up and then locked up in a locked room.
Do we know how some of the other schools around the area handle this?
Well, yes, the governor came out with some guidance saying that using student lockers doesn't necessarily meet the policy. Schools around here are doing lockers. One school here, I'm not gonna name, do a practice run of this and they have the students put their phones in their lockers, in their, in their, in their school lockers, did not work.
Which I get, that part, that part I get.
So, some are, some are purchasing devices like these, storage devices like these, some are just doing pouches. One board member, she, I guess I had Corinne mentioned the pouch, I don't know if it worked, cause they can't find a way to access the pouches. So we, from Dr. Cryer, Ms. Westman, our chef, we believe this is the, the best possible option, not the best, Chad, but the best possib, but the, but the best possible option.
How many phones does this?
We're in the largest one of us.
Box hold? Okay, how many phones does the, why does box hold?
I'm not thinking for a minute.
I think it was seventy, was it seventy-two?
Yeah.
Does that sound about right? Seventy-two, I believe they, they calculated to fit one of like these filing cabinets, you know, reasonably.
But if you find out that this process doesn't work, logistically, then we will.
We're gonna have to adjust it all, yeah.
This is just the sort of trial and error right now. Cause we don't know how long it's gonna take in the morning, or when the bell rings at kind of three or whenever it rings, as to how you're going to disperse all of this. We're gonna have lines of kids waiting to pick up their phones. And I'm not against this ban, I'm just saying, it just seems like it's a good.
So the other pieces that, you know.
A logistical nightmare here.
We've done, we've already three meetings on this already, but one next, next week. What we settle on is this concept. The principle of looking at the current status and see how this would actually operate. The middle school is gonna be tougher because there's so many floors.
Well, and what room is gonna hold ten of these boxes?
Well, there's space around here, yeah, that's not our concern.
Yeah, I would go to L. Sam's point too with our busing to get these kids their phone on the bus and these buses out and on time too is gonna be tricky.
So it'll be a trade-off, yeah.
And are they gonna be at the, are these same filing cabinets gonna be at the same entrance every day?
Yeah.
What if I get picked up one day? I have to go all the way to the bus spot just to go all the way back out that door?
On those occasions, if you get picked up, yeah. I mean, most students come and enter the same, the same way every day. You're right, there are exceptions, the most come and enter the same way.
So you're probably going to have one of these things just with the busing students anyway, right?
Everything else will, high school, they come out this door, they come in, they're out this door, so we would have several for them, the rest come in through the main doors.
So I guess we have to adopt the policy per New York State, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this policy can be adjusted if we approve it this evening, it can be adjusted.
Well, the policy can, how we implement the policy can be adjusted, yeah.
Okay.
So we just have to agree with the policy, how we enact it is up to our discretion.
But I think what we've heard a lot from our staff is having them in the lockers, not the lockers, the chaise at our, but the student lockers, is not gonna work. Again, there's a district that tried it and dispatched you and it was not successful. As far as the point about the cell phone, the storage lockers, we, we had heavy conversation about that. And we landed on this as being the best possible, best possible option, cause it's the most portable. Is it perfect? I don't, you know, I don't know, but it's, it's our, it's our best based on what we've gathered. And parent service, staff survey, talking to our tech director, this seems like the best possible option. And again, the board wasn't voting on this as much as we're voting on the policy, so give us a chance to, to.
Well, I feel like we don't really have a choice but to vote on the policy, the state hasn't given us a choice. We have to adapt to, adopt.
We have to adapt, yeah.
It's not like we actually have a choice.
Well, those, the choices, you know, the policy I have in front of me has been tweaked for our needs here. Well, those, the choices, you know, the policy I have in, have in front of me has been tweaked for our needs here, um, that you look at last month.
Any other discussion, questions?
We will have a discussion about the policy itself though. Are we gonna discuss that now, because I have a couple of questions about the policy?
I think that would be fine to talk about.
Okay, um, my questions had to do with, um, under, um, the policy, methods for parents to contact students during the school day. Um, what is a designated contact email?
It could be our clerical email, so our, our office secretary's email, uh, we could come up with a juvenile email.
How much is that gonna impact their normal job, migrating that with six hundred students per?
They take phone, we have to do what they take phone calls anyway, I mean.
So that's something that's generated?
I mean, we have parents email our clerical staff anyway.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and, um, what is a school messaging application?
That would be, um, parent square, so, so, parent square.
Okay, okay, um, under, um, for purposes of this policy, um, if authorized by a teacher, principal, or district for a specific educational purpose, what does that mean?
So if a teacher wanted to use a cellphone for a lesson in class, which that can be an example, and now they want to use it, they're, they have to get permission from the principal to let that happen. If they wanted to, if they wanted to do something to experiment, or something to gain on the cell phones, a lot of that can be done on the Chromebooks though as well.
Right.
So, you know, I've seen teachers use cell phones for lessons in class, uh, if they wanted to do it that way, permission would need to be granted ahead of time.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, um.
So, if you don't mind me interrupting, so if a teacher does, or a principal approves that, are they going to get that cellphone out of this locker for that, for that class?
They have to give us enough notice.
Okay.
It's gonna just, it's gonna happen the day of, it's gonna happen the day of.
Okay.
And, um, it's also said where necessary for management of student healthcare.
So that's in the policy, so IEPs, uh, examples would be like diabetes trackers, all that has to go through a doctor, or if it's in the student's IEP or file a four plan, that will be part of the plan, uh, part, you know, part of their plan to allow them to have a phone for those purposes only.
Okay, yeah.
So they could have it on their person but not have it out?
Correct, and not use it unless it's for a purpose like their medical needs.
Let's see, we're also doing, we have another question, um. So you're saying, I think you mentioned this a few minutes back, if the, the policy is broken by the student, um, caught with the cellphone in their possession during the day, whatever, it says specifically in the policy that no discipline can be meted out at that point.
Correct.
But i- is that a, you get one freebie?
If they continually, if they continually like, you know, refuse, if, if he always has to put his cellphone away on a Monday.
Yeah.
And he does.
Yeah.
He's asked to put it away again on Tuesday, and he doesn't, that would be an interfraction, if it's not speaking of cell phones. Um, to do that, see, with these, thanks, thanks for the, thanks for that demonstration, Jess. My bad. Put your floor in the house.
That's one.
That's one, so I, I, so this, if I'm teaching a class and Jess's cellphone goes off, and I say, hey, Jess, you know, the cellphone has to be off anyway. Jess is gonna say yes, right? If he, if he does it again the next day, and the cellphone's still there, um, you could say that could be, you know, it could be, um, insubordination, or a poor once, you put the cellphone away, maybe it would be doing wrong, happen again, it might be, it might be like a detention, that type of thing, so.
So that refers to?
Jess will not initially get any consequence for what just happened whilst teaching a class.
Right, so, and that would come from the code of conduct if it's multiple times on multiple days?
Correct.
Okay.
The code of conduct speaks to that generally now anyways, if we're gonna update that in August.
Are you anticipating any, um, backlash from parents?
Of course, yes, we are, and, and the surveys told us that. We'll work with the parents as much as we can, I expect there's, I expect there to be conflict on it, there was, there's conflict around the backpack policy, right? Um, I expect there to be conflict, conflict around this, the line of sure parents educated on it, you know, the, if you look at the surveys, by and large, there's a strong support, our teachers obviously are very, are very strong supportive of it, um, yes, I expect there'll be issue with it.
But if the parent is adamant about having their child have a cellphone in the school, wouldn't that, um, you can't mete out punishment to a parent because they're not a part of the school district, is there gonna be any reflection on the student?
The student can't have a cellphone in school from bell to bell, that, that much is very clear from the law. So if the student has the cellphone, the rapist can't give a penalty consequences, if the student has a cellphone, they're gonna be subject to consequences, um, for insubordination, for failure to follow those basic corrections.
And that will be expressed to those parents that are against this policy?
Yes.
Okay.
So if that student does come in, phones in his, he, he doesn't turn it into the, the pouch, it's in his backpack the whole entire day, it's not out?
We're wearing all this, it goes off.
Okay, now, just like Jess's phone went off, is the staff going to be directed to have the student put it inside the locker at that time?
They'll be directed to, you'd call this, it's a principal, I have to still leave, so if they have a, uh, given a pouch, it could be a right. Appreciate all the questions.
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure we're consist, consistent across the board, I mean, you know, one building or, or, or staff can't say, hey, put it, put it in your bag, put it in your locker, whereas the next, next student's being told, you know, you gotta go to the assistant, you have to go to the assistant principal's office, and so.
And we, and we saw.
Yeah, we, we need to be consistent across the board.
You're right, and we saw that theme expressed in our parent show, in the, on the shores, and this, again, this is only for grade sevens through twelve, uh, the rest of the grades, you know, with the grades.
My third grader, my third grader can come in with his phone?
No.
Would there be any, um, what would be the reason that, um, an individual education program student would have a cellphone, um, access to a cellphone?
Um, translation services perhaps, that's not, that's not IEP, but translation services, um, what else, I don't remember talking.
Communication device.
Yeah, um, hearing type thing, visual type thing, uh, medical needs, that type of stuff. Medical needs can be expressed in a five or four plan, which is different than an IEP, but it's just the same kind of stuff.
Some accommodations, um, but I would say we'd work with.
We'd work with the doctor and the CSE office and all that.
And do you know of any students that would presently use their phones for translation?
We use some, we use some, yeah, we have some for medical needs.
Medical needs, but not for translation?
Not that I know of.
Some E and L students, they, there's apps for that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We've, we've involved our CSE office in this, these conversations as well, Kelly's been part of the conversation.
We, we do have some iPads that we use, so it doesn't have to be their cellphone device, but.
They can also use Chromebooks if they're, that will serve some other purpose too.
So you're anticipating all the parents that, um, have purchased, um, smartphones from, uh, Apple Watches, that they have to actually purchase a different watch for their child?
Yes, well, they don't use their watches to keep time.
Well, yes, we do.
You do, I do, but the students don't.
Oh.
They use it to text, add, add a child that has their cell, so.
Okay.
They don't use their watch to keep time, they may, but the purpose is not to, my watch, it only tells time, doesn't do anything else.
Mm-hmm.
So that the smart watches they have are for other purposes.
I guess my only ask with this would be that we put that, uh, letter out to the families sooner than later.
It's ready to go now.
Halfway through July, so then that'll give us the month of August, or I shouldn't say us, give, give you the, the opportunity to.
Respond, yeah.
Respond as much need be, um, you know, get whatever we need to.
I have the draft ready to go, it'll be out this week, not today, so it's all set to go.
And I'm sure our, our families will have a ton of questions too, once that's received, how are we planning on communicating, just online, or are we gonna be sending this up, out on parents?
We're gonna send it on parent square and on the website, both. Parent square and the website, there'll be a website page, probably you even have videos to like demonstrate how this actually worked.
Not, not to start, not this week.
I know, but yeah, right, and when the website's ready to go.
Yeah.
I, I know, and, and the letter's ready to go as well.
Okay.
Um, and we're still meeting, the principals and I are still meeting to work on some of these details, questions you've asked as well, but. And again, August first, we have to report the policy that adopted, for us to get that money, uh, to purchase these items.
And you are planning to post this policy in a vis- visible place in the, in the schools?
On the website, it has to be posted.
Just, oh, does?
We, we, you know, we can post it in the schools, the obligation, you know, we can, but we are expecting to post it on the website, we can, yeah.
Well, some of us aren't, well, I can do the, the website, but I can't to parent square.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You want to, how much do I need, does it put you on the spot?
Uh.
Any questions you have?
What would be the procedure if I had to contact like a grandparent about some kind of change for being picked up? Because I know there are some students that have different people who pick them up, or don't have their own transportation, whether that be a car or anything, so how would that go if I had to like call my grandmother?
So my idea is your trouble was having possibly a, a dedicated office for students to use, that's one idea we talked about. The other idea not to manage to work with our clerical staff, we could use an office phone down there, so when that does happen, one idea we've talked about was to have a possible line for students to use, at least in the high school, where all have to manage that, and or just go to an office like, you know, we used to back in the early days, there's that, that's possibility too. We could also bring back old fashioned.
Do you, do you remember numbers?
Not very well. I can't speak that, I'm just saying, I remember our number, yeah, you know, but.
Good question, you're right.
So is he gonna be able to get his phone for that number?
If he needs to look it up, we can, we can have a clerical person open it for you, yeah.
What if I needed to contact a grandparent who isn't in like the system, or someone who isn't in the system, that would be?
So if they're on your cellphone? Hmm? So if the grandparent's number's on his cellphone?
So he has to call me to pick him up, and he doesn't know why, if I'm not on his contact list.
As a high school, so you would want to get the phone, or he'll have the number down somewhere.
So he'd be able to get to his locker if there were an emergency to, to get the number on his cellphone? So I say, I think we're gonna try to make it as, as friendly as possible, I think there's gonna be a lot of.
Different questions.
A lot of questions, a lot of, uh, you know, adjustments that we have to, to get used to, which, you know, I think we did with the backpack policy as well. Uh, unfortunately, you know, hopefully our district families understand that this is being required by New York State, and not us as a board that's, that's installing this, or, you know, Super Ken Smith. What I, I think I would like is then, uh, for the board, just an update as we go through the changes and things that you guys are making, so, um, if families, district families do reach out to us, we can have some answers, as well as direct them to you, but, uh, so we're up to date on, on the, the procedures that we're gonna require from the students and the families.
That's good, yeah, we can have each, we'll have more information possibly at August or September as well for you.
And then, um, if families, once we post this, we publish this, if they do have questions, conversations, who should they be directing those to? Between, between now and when, when school starts?
Start with the principals.
We're gonna be putting this out sooner than, than school's starting, so if district families have questions, they should be contacting the.
The principals.
The building principals, so, okay.
Uh, the principals, at least, at least in middle school, high school, have that intimate involvement process, because it's more interactive than, so they've been at all the meetings, Karen, I was saying, I was, whether Wendy, the law, tech director, both mine and Andy have been there, so there's been lots of brains around this. Um, and again, we have the Shirley data, it's been a guy's signals after he fuses a lot, so, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
This goes back to.
Ask away.
This goes back to the district, uh, safety policy, I recall reading today that they were giving, there's a, um, list of things that they should have in an emergency bag of some sort, if there, if something happens in the district in which the school has to be evacuated or whatever. And one of, one of the things on the list is grab your phone. That's a teacher phone, right?
Yes, it's a teacher phone, if it's an after, we can, if we, if we're having a real emergency, we're not gonna worry about having a cellphone, it's not really, we're not gonna worry about that. It's just not, you know, if it's a weather issue, or we have to like close school early, we're not gonna time for that, but certainly if it's true, if it's a true emergency, our minds are not around getting cell phones to students, no, we're not keeping them safe.
But, yes, totally support that, but is that not why parents send phones with kids? So that they know what's going on in the school if an emergency happens?
That's a reason.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So on top of our.
Now we're saying we can't have the phone.
But on top of our parent square, um, I know when we have cancellations, we utilize the text messages that, that get sent out. Um, is that something that you can do building individually wise, so if there is a lockdown, or some sort of thing going on, that not only with parent square, like, as L. S. N. said, not, sometimes grandparents are the ones responsible, or other family members, that we can at least get that text message sent out for the, the non-parent square?
So depending on what kind of emergency it is, um, if it's a major emergency, um, if I do an alert, it goes out to everybody who's on a child's list, so if, um, Jen happened to be on Eli's list, uh, for this, this major emergency, generally get the text, it would depend on what the emergency is. A routine lockdown would not be something we would probably do a major emergency call for, or is it a real lockdown, then we would alert everybody.
I think if, just if we can improve or, or be as quick as possible on communicating that to the families, especially if the, the students won't be getting their phones, that the parents get, uh, a quicker notification on, that can be good. Uh, you know, sometimes we hear that, that, you know, the students tell the parents before we get it, if we can make sure that that's getting, you know, communicated as quickly as possible.
And that, well, that happened last time because students had the phones.
Correct, so, correct. All right, any other questions, discussion?
I just wanna, I wanna pause my report to, to, to bring our students in, and I'll finish up your, you do the, I'd like to.
Go back to that letter.
Can you grab the students, bro? So we have. Come on in. We have a relay team here, and we have another hour, and we have our pole vaulter, all right.
Come right up front.
Come right up front, so we're gonna have our board president, and your other families, so why don't you do that? So we'll have, uh, we wanna recognize our state champions and the girls.
Division two, class B state champion.
Well, by one relay, so why don't you, you know, Mr. Riddo can call you in, and I'll recognize Cooper. Go, yeah, so come on.
I think that was supposed to be you handling.
No, that's you, that's you, Jack, you're the board president.
All right, let's see if I. All right, so again, on behalf of the board, the school district, we wanna congratulate you guys for an incredible season that you had, and, and representing our school district at the state championship. So we have a couple certificates for you, um, that shows your, this is in recognition for the New York State Division two, class B state champion for the four by one relay. And we have Edison O'Donnell. Navaya?
Naveya.
Naveya, all right, Naveya Thomas. Ms. Ella Schimpf.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies.
Say anything if you want. How was, how was it? Did you guys have fun?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Very exciting.
Yeah, nothing?
It was exciting.
I know you're more talkative than that, I know most parents, and you just can't keep them quiet. All right, Cooper, come on up, bud. All right, so we have Cooper Kinesny as well, and this is in recognition for his state championship and pole vault.
And what was your height, Cooper?
Fifteen-six.
What are your time, ladies, what are your time?
Forty-eight point, forty-seven. Forty-seven point five one, or eight.
Forty-seven-five-one is your school record.
That's a school record, you were school.
What do we run at school? But also the second best is in the state amongst big, small, and present.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He was there for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Cooper.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies. What do you mean?
Uh, I'm not sure yet.
All right, that was nice, I'll finish up my comments here, um.
How many of those girls we seen?
None.
None.
A couple are gonna be seniors.
Couple will be, were juniors.
Eddie and Ellie are gonna be seniors, Christmas is gonna be a junior, and today it's gonna be a junior.
She's a junior. Okay. And then, Naveya is how?
She's a freshman. Who's freshman, Naveya? And then Ella and Eddie are gonna be seniors. So back to my report, I recognize we have a great summer meal program happening at all of our parks, there's some pictures of our, of our students there. I want to thank Andy and his staff, and Susan Crusher and her staff, they've done a great job servicing our families. This year, we have weekend meal kits available, the turnout has been very good, we're servicing all the schools, some high school, and our parks in the city as well. So I want to recognize that for a great job with that. UPK and kindergarten registration is ongoing, so please contact the registration office and get signed up for UPK and kindergarten. Exciting news, the middle school have been, have received a New York State peer mediation award. Where our teachers are going to train right now, this is an award through the Department of Education, Community Dispute, Resolution Center, and the Corps System. We're very excited about that, Dr. Corey's been working hard there with the staff, I wanted to add anything to that, Molly?
So they actually went last week, and it was the SELA summer from middle school and high school, where you can go, and they were, received training for themselves, and the group will then come to Batavia to help turnkey it with the kids. The kids will be trained in peer mediation at the middle school and at high school.
So we're very excited about that training, we're gonna do more information on that in the fall. And our leadership retreat is coming up with the leadership team in Elkhartville, there'll be some national trainers there, there'll be some time for some team bonding, and then there'll be time with our leadership coach from Solution Tree on that Thursday, so that's gonna be coming up in a couple weeks. And then our set development is happening, there's some pictures there of our teachers that work. Molly can speak more on that, but we're doing stuff on Canva, which is a technology item. IXL from Athene, LA, we're working with our both cities in the bottom right, and anyone want to add, Molly?
So high school's bringing IXL, it's their universal screener, and they're gonna help, it's gonna help with the PLC process. They had their training today, and they were really excited about the features. When they pick a priority standard, it will help so that kids can practice just that, and they can watch the results, so they're, they're really excited about it.
And then summer cleaning, I want to recognize our maintenance staff, they're hard at work in all the schools, this is at the high school, you can see furniture being, being taken out, removed, floors are being waxed. As we speak, we have many student workers throughout all of our schools are working hard under the guys, and Chad, plus and his team, so I want to recognize them. We have kids overseas, students are overseas right now, very exciting, I wish I was there, glad to be here at work, I wish I was there. We have students in Italy, Barcelona, there's a picture of our students there, I'm not quite sure where it was taken, but they're, they're right now as we speak, having a great time. And then our Blue Devil athletes, recognize one of fourteen schools, recognized by NISFA for a school of excellence. Congratulations to Mr. Reed, our coaches, and our student athletes, and Eli's one of our athletes, he does golf and track, right? So, we receive excellence based on our academics, I want to recognize our student athletes for that. Summer programs happening, these are pictures from Jackson, I was there last week visiting our students, we have many programs happening. This, this year, they're all being, they're all happening at Jackson because of roof construction on John Kennedy. We have some robust summer programming happening there. And finally, later on the agenda, the board, I want to engage you on looking at some possible workshops with our PLC coach. Those dates there in October, January, and March, to have in-person session workshop type thing, where you can learn more about this project. And that's all I have, any questions? Normally Eli would give a report, but we'll save that for August, once you want to, I appreciate the comments on the cellphone too, so. Any questions on board, on the ladies? Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to consent grouping. We'll need a motion to do consent items F through L to group.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lenve, need a second?
Second.
By Mr. Roll, all in favor?
Aye. Aye, I, I do have one, I don't know how much of a stickler you want us to be.
Be a stickler, let's go.
Um, under schedule C, they have for VHS ski club, they have Mr. Mettler as Mr. Metter. Just mistaken his name.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
And, wait, I'm gonna go to Oh, yes, it was in, is your report under consent items, Andy?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, then I'll bring it up then.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I forgot what that left on.
Uh, so that's for us to add for consent surplus, there is none at this time, and whole business. So we will need a motion for license and maintenance agreement between Ed Data and DCSD.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Benedict, second by Mr. Roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Does that include each one, or we have?
One at a time.
One at a time? All right, so, we'll need a motion for the use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Roll, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lenve, all in favor?
Aye.
Next motion would be for the maximum temperature for school buildings and indoor facilities, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roll, is there a second?
Second, but I have a question.
All right.
Um, in this, um, policy, it says that you would move students if we get, if they got to the maximum degree.
Right.
To a cooler place, where is that, where would that be for each of the schools, where would they go?
Hang on a second. Where would it, so we have some rooms in our school that are air-conditioned, the libraries and some of them, for example. Not every room reaches that maximum temperature, the last, the last time we did this survey, we found one, it was last year, second floor, Robert Moore, so we could move to a room that's not, that doesn't release that temperature, doesn't have to be air, doesn't have to be air-conditioned.
I see, it can just be moved to another classroom that hasn't.
It's like taking a little break, you just have to give a chance to cool down, so.
Every teacher has fans in the room now, too.
We've had some hot days at Jackson, there's several sites, there's a conference room, the multipurpose room, the library, some classes are just signing out, going there for a little break and then going back.
Okay, that's all right, that'll be good, yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Roll, second by Mrs. Benedict, do we have any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, new business, we have, Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, our board shops with PLC, At Work Institute by Solution Tree.
If there are no objections, I'd like to have Carl put it on the calendar for us, so we can attend those in person and watch, whether I can attend, can attend, it would not be a meeting. So if we have three people, two people, and five people, it would be a workshop where we could have more free-form, free-form conversation. Allison has been to some of those, but I'd like to make a little more formal, so if there's no objections, or, you know, we can put those dates on the calendar for us, I can have Carl add those, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
All right, we will need a motion for the revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Board of Educating meeting schedule, and that was to switch our October meeting date. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Mrs. Lenve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Benedict, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, resolution to create a civil service position, school district data specialist registrar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Benedict, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roll, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Last subject is to approve the job description for the school district data specialist and registrar, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion?
Will this person be housed?
Uh, registrar's office, up front.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. No motion, I'm sorry. So we do have our other reports, for administrative reports from curriculum, operations in the business office listed on the website, for anyone to take a view of those.
I understand that question.
Yep.
It's another question.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Allison.
It's a spelling, I'm sorry.
Sure.
She got you.
She's got an Albert Red teacher pen on her.
I, I read everything, so, it's under additional updates, I believe under transferred one million five hundred thousand, reduce overall borrowing?
Borrowing.
I'm not borrowing.
We're not borrowing anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next borrowing is correct, is borrowing, sorry.
Thank you for that, yeah, I'll make sure to correct that on my next report.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not really being critical, it's, I thought, oh, it's a new term, borrowing.
Yeah, no, we're not digging a hole.
No.
It's literally after you dig it.
Didn't want it to be misinterpreted.
Thank you. All right, last thing is for any board members, comments, or reports? All right, if we don't have any reports, then we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Roll, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lenve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.